I call the meeting over. Judy can take the role. Number two, discussion of votes to approve the minutes on March 25th, 21, special board meeting, and March 21, regular meeting. Any discrepancies? Anybody see there? Any motion? I'll second. Judy?
Lilfield?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Wai?
Yes.
Number three, discussion of vote to approve the general fund, encumbrances, POs, and warrants.
In your packet, there is, I'm not sure which page, it's not really numbered, but our printout there lists all of our purchase orders for this month. There are a few there that I want to draw your attention to. Number thirteen, Charles W. Carroll. That amount for $5,300 is for the audit that was presented at the special meeting on the 23rd of March. That's that cost there. That's what that is for. So that was a rather large amount for this month. Another one, down there, number eighty-eight, Carol Robertson. That one is the part-time counselor that we use at the elementary. And we're using our $789 money, which is the Gears Governor's incentive grant for COVID relief. So we're using that money to pay for that. Then a couple other ones. Co-op bill, fuel cost has gone up a little bit as we have more activities going on. Those costs will go up a little bit, so it's a little bit higher. And then our OKTLE, that is the cost of the teacher evaluation license that we approved at the beginning of March. And so that payment is for that. Other than that, most of the other things on that list are pretty routine monthly costs. If there are any on there that you would like to ask about? William Scottson, that is the portal. That's the rent amount for all three of those. Both skipped the two of them. We only want so.
Any other questions? General fund? Motion to approve? I'll make a look at it.
Lilfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Wai?
Discussion of vote to approve the building fund, encumbrances, POs, and warrants.
Building fund is pretty straightforward. We have shifted our utilities, gas, water, and electric still in an effort to keep our general fund expenses down. So those costs are coming out of the building fund still. And the only real added thing there would be the $973.50. That's for just chemical and fertilizer spray for the grass. Again, we're buying that stuff. Billy Urban is applying all of that, so that's saving us a little bit of money, a little bit of money there without contracting those things out.
Any other questions concerned on the building fund? I make a motion to approve the building fund? Number seven?
I'll second.
Desiree, second? Judy?
Lilfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Wai?
Yes.
Number five, discussion of vote to approve child nutrition fund, encumbrances, POs, and warrants.
There's nothing there other than all these food costs.
Motion to approve? Desiree, all right. Judy?
Lilfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker? Gibson?
Yes.
Wai?
Yes.
Six, discussion of vote to approve the treasurer's report.
Well, the only thing I wanted to point out is that we got two payments this month in the child nutrition fund because they were delayed on doing payments. We got Jane Wright and February's payment, which is very much, the amount in there is so high. And our payment from the county is not, should be a little larger for the general fund, which we haven't received yet. It's not in there yet.
We're hoping that one of the protests that was resolved, we talked about a couple months ago, I'm hoping that that money shows up this month. It's kind of what I was told when it was settled. So hopefully that will be there, and that will be a little bit higher. And then there's another smaller one that they are trying to get settled as quickly as they can. So hopefully we get that before the end of the year also.
Any other questions? On treasurer's report? Members made a motion. I'll second. Judy?
Lilfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Wai?
Yes.
Number seven, discussion of vote to approve the activity fund report? Member?
I just wanted to let everyone know on the imagination library account, we did receive a donation of $2,000. That's from Ken Wright. He donates that every year. It's a program, the belly part for the younger, fewer, fewer poison. Anyway, so that'll go in there, and we pay that every year, and it sells.
Thank you. Any questions for the activity fund report? If not, I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Desiree, second?
Lilfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yep.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Wai?
Yes.
Number eight, discussion and vote to approve any resignation submitted?
We have several resignation letters. Those are included in the packet. Cassie Hare, who is at the elementary, has the administrative assistant. She has amended a letter of resignation. Shelley Burleson, Kathy Parks, Mallory Klein, Kathy Graham, Patty Neams, and Richmond. And several of these have taught in the school system for a very long time. I won't read each of those letters individually, but you all can do that. They are very appreciative of the board and teachers that they've all worked with over the years in the administration. And, you know, we just, we hate to see them go, but it's time for them, and they felt like that it was the right time for many of them to retire and move on to the next chapter. There are some of those that are going to go on and teach another district. So we want to wish them the best of luck in serving most students. And if they do the job that they've done for us here, those districts will be, will be better with them there. So I would recommend that we accept each of those letters for resignation.
Motion to approve? Desiree, second? Judy?
Lilfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
Gibson?
Wai?
Yes.
Number nine, principals' reports?
Well, testing season has arrived. We start state testing tomorrow with our fifth graders, so they worked hard and they're ready to show us what they have. So start that, and then about every day till the 27th, somebody's going to be testing in my building. Ag department is going to have a petting zoo for our elementary kids tomorrow, so they're excited about that. Fifth grade's been does track meets. They've got track meet on the 21st, 28th. And then we're going to host our Jesse Mary track meet on May 4th for grades one through six with Burlington and Timberlake coming. Kyle has the touch of community, makes six, right? Where they bring all the different emergency vehicles, all the kids go sit in them and talk to the emergency officials there. That's about all I have.
Testing begins tomorrow, as Ms. Richmond said. Mr. Jordan has the seniors busy, scholarship applications. Eighth and ninth grade will be touring Northwest Technology Center. And the juniors are going to take the ACT year trip on April 13th. The FCC LA State Convention, bunch of kids went to it. Mrs. Gutch said she had two state champions, two runner-ups in third place. They did a tremendous job at Mrs. Gutch as well, as they always do. Upcoming meets here, we have the Betty Merle High School Track Meet here on April 13th, Elementary Junior High Meet here on the 17th, Regional Track on the 13th. And then, of course, the state meeting in May. The FFA continue to do contests. They're still very involved, even though the showing season has pretty much ended. They're also selling flowers and tomatoes, I think, and different things. If you're interested, they've done a really good job on their greenhouse out there. Miss Snyder handed the kids taking care of that. District baseball softball is between, it'll be between the 22nd, 24th of April. April 29th, FCC LA will have an awards banquet. 27th through the 29th, FFA convention. Maybe that's 26th through 28th, I'm sorry. Kids are participating in golf, softball, baseball, track. Of course, coming to school, still learning, so there's a lot of, April's so busy. State speech is April 8th through the 10th. This Friday, April 9th, is the AEC annual meeting. April 17th is prom. April 20th, golf qualifier. April 26th, regional golf. April 26th, spring sport pictures. And the FFA banquet is May 4th, the same day as the Jesse Marys. So a lot of things going on in April.
You, principals? Number 10, discussion of vote that due to an overreaching, illegal, and unconstitutional nature of the action by the State Board of Education, the Board of Education demands that the State Board of Education meet and rescind the action of March 25th, 21, adopting a resolution to equalize funding between all public schools and charter schools and settle a lawsuit with Oklahoma Public Charter Schools Association.
So this is, this has been presented through lots of different organizations. And it was presented to us through our attorney's office that this is something that we want to pursue. As it stated on March 25th, the State Board of Education is ordered to settle a lawsuit. And it's my understanding and my belief, along with many other superintendents, including State Superintendent Hoffmeister, that that action was unconstitutional and illegal because by doing that, they were deciding how to allocate funds. And that is the responsibility of the state legislature, not the State Board of Education. So what we're really discussing here is whether or not we want to join in a cooperative agreement with other schools and organizations to try to get them to rescind that action. It's hopeful that this can be done without litigation. Right now, it's just kind of a stalemate. But it's not really, we're not trying to change really the decision. It's just whether or not they were able to make that. So I agree with Superintendent Hoffmeister in that it was not the State Board's, not their power to make that decision. So it's just up to us on whether or not we locally want to pursue that. Ultimately, if it was upheld, it would take funds from our building fund and allocate those out to charter schools. And it would affect every school, every public school district in Oklahoma. And that money would be taken away from them and then sent to those charter schools. So it's unknown exactly what those amounts would be for us specifically. Given the situation we're in, we can't afford that.
If they do equalize it, if they're already, does that mean that if you don't sign up with them, that if there's any monies that would be added to this through the lawsuit?
No.
So it's basically?
There's no advantage or disadvantage by not, you know, signing up as far as what you might get if it's won or overturned. This is just the first step in saying, do we want to join this fight?
Okay. And what's your?
I mean, I definitely think they overstepped their bounds and did some things that they don't have the authority to do. Number 10, these are the items that, like I said, are legal, our attorney's office sent us, that we could put on the agenda and then vote. The first one is a little bit confusing. We would basically just be voting for the State Board of Education to rescind their decision, and it would just be putting it in our minutes, saying that we did it. And then the second one that we'll get to in a little bit, kind of grants some more powers. But it's, like I said, it's really up to us whether or not we want to pursue this. Potentially, it could cost us some money when we join this agreement because they're going to base the billing off of your ADM, your enrollments. And then how many school districts decide to join up? When I spoke to them last, they thought there would definitely be a couple hundred school districts that were taking this effort to do that. So, and then only if it went to litigation would it even start costing us money, but.
What do they think it might cost us?
Anywhere between, could be $1,000 up to $2,000, somewhere in that ballpark. So, well, and that's the thing. I wish, I wish we knew what it would cost us if, you know, the same way could be taken away from us.
If the, you know, if we don't do anything and all the other schools do, we just kind of save the grand?
Right. I mean, we're essentially going to get it.
Either way, that we do it doesn't really matter.
I just think we've got enough people back in the fight. Just kind of, I'm thinking, but do you have a recommendation either way, or what's your?
I mean, like I said, I really think that they were way out of line here. And I think if we were in a better financial position, I'd be ready to.
Hold their feet to the fire, okay?
To go after it. I just, I don't know right now that, I don't know if we can commit to it financially if we want to.
On a side note, what, if you had to guess, what did they think they were doing? Like, what did, in their minds, if they were trying to sell it to us here, what did they think this is going to turn into in the future?
I think they were trying to resolve it, and it was a four-year-old lawsuit. I think they felt like they could just end it and resolve it and make a vote. And State Superintendent even told them that she didn't think they could do that, but they did anyway.
If we took no action, is that something we could take up at a later time if we felt like we wanted to get involved with it?
Yeah, because even if we do agree to it, we can get out of it later also. So I would imagine that, and I'll ask the attorney if that's something that we can step up, you know, to later if things progress and we feel like it's something we want to be a part of. But it was just presented to us that we needed to discuss this locally.
How many districts are there in the state?
510.
And have been 508 of them are going to sue the state?
Could. I mean, I don't know. I know there's, I haven't talked to anybody that's happy about it.
Any other questions for Bryce? If not, if there is not, I'll give a few seconds for a motion, and if there's not, we'll just, I think, no actions. No action on number 10. Number 11, discussion of vote to authorize the superintendent and district legal council to pursue appropriate actions, including limitations to the State Board of Education. These organizations are persons who have entered the State Board of Education actions on March 25th, 21.
I think it's, like I said, that was just going to get an permission to tell the attorney what we want to do. I don't know that we have to approve that for me to tell them we're not going to do anything, so.
So no action on level 11. Number 12, discussion of vote to approve the HB 364 method where charity public schools will document containing the hours of classroom time instead of the traditional method of having to date the 21, 22 school year.
So we approve the calendar. I just need to get your approval and have it in the minutes that we're going to use the hours instead of the days method. So that when I submit that to the State Department, we have it in the minutes. It's been approved. We're not changing anything in our calendar that we've already approved.
So are we going back to that, or are we?
That's what we've been doing. That's what we've been doing. And this is just kind of some housekeeping things. And I just have to have that in there so that I can turn that into.
Any more questions?
I'll second.
Desiree, second? Judy?
Lilfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Wai?
Yes.
Number 13, proposed executive session to discuss the employment status of certified and/or support personnel on listed attachment A for the school year 21 and 22, so that for an return open session, I vote to employ and support certified and support personnel for the school year 21 and 22, person up to 25 OS, 307 B1. Members made a motion to convene. I'll second.
Lilfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Wai?
Yes.
723. 13, discussion of vote to acknowledge your turn open session. I make a motion to adjourn.
Who did the first?
I did.
Lilfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Wai?
Yes.
Fine.
Oh, sorry. Final eight. What's the statement?
During executive session, we discuss the employment status of certified and/or support personnel as listed on attachment A for the school year 21, 22, so that we could return to open session to vote to employ or not to employ said certified and/or support personnel for the school year 21, 22.
Thank you, member. Number 14, superintendent's recommendations.
It's my recommendation that we hire all certified and support staff listed on attachment A.
Number 15, discussion of vote to employ or not to employ employees listed on attachment A.
Make a motion to employ all employees listed on attachment A.
Members made a motion. Desiree, second? Judy?
Lilfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Wai?
Yes.
Number 16, superintendent's report.
I'll try to keep this pretty quick. Just kind of want to update on a couple of Senate bills, some House bills, just on the legislative, in the legislative arena. Senate Bill 783 is a bill that had to do with transfers, and that is something that will take effect January of 2022. Basically, what that bill did was just make it a little bit easier for students to transfer. And there will be some guidelines that go along with that. So that's something we're going to be looking at and just looking at our current policies and what we need to change with that. I don't see that having a negative effect on us, but I do think there's going to be some more hoops that we have to jump through, more reporting, basically, to the State Department. But we are probably going to have to set some criteria as far as class sizes and things like that that we can handle. So those won't be bad things. It's just some stuff we've got to do. But again, that won't come in effect until January of 2022. Another one that kind of has to do with funding and the formula is House Bill 2078. So at the end of the year, your ADM, your weighted ADM is used to calculate your funding formula. And previously, you could kind of go off of a previous two years, whichever one of the highest, you've got to use that. They've reduced that. You can only either use the current year or the previous years. And so they're trying to alleviate some things there. Our ADM doesn't fluctuate as much, and we're not on the formula 100%. So again, may not have that big of an effect on us. There are some other things in that, in that bill, that would allow your carryover limits to be higher. So hopefully, we can get back on our feet. And at some point, maybe that's something that we will have to worry about again. But this bill addresses some of those things. So those are two kind of bigger bills right now that are, that have gone through and gone across the governor's desk already. Other than that, like the principal said, everything's really busy. Teachers are getting ready for state testing. Activities are going on like crazy, which is a good thing. This year has been obviously different and with COVID and all that other kind of stuff. Kind of nice to see all the activities and stuff going on. Students get to do those things that they enjoy doing outside of school. This time last year, we weren't. We're still waiting to see what the amount might be for federal funding with the stimulus money that's going to come in. And then once we know what that is, we'll know what some of the commitments and things are that we can do with that and need to do with that, and how we can best serve our students with that, with that money. So other than that, like I said, I think the principal's kind of hit the highlights on some things. So as far as superintendent's report, that's all I've got.
Number 17, discussion and vote to approve the resolution for Prosperity Bank designated Breichman Buckner as coordinator and moving Don Henderson.
That's just housekeeping things. Just kind of going through the process, getting my name on the thing that needs to be on, others off.
Cameras made a motion. Desiree, second? Judy?
Lilfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Wai?
Yes.
Number 18, discussion of vote to approve the contract for Barlow Education Management Services for the school year 21, 22, an amount of $59,000. Barlow assisted the district for the federal tax.
This is something that we, as a school, have used for the last couple of years. And something I've. something I've kind of, you know, really tried to evaluate to see if it's something we need, and I really think that it is something that we need to do. It's kind of, I look at it as an investment. Through our federal programs, there's just lots of hoops to jump through, lots of reports that have to be due, there's processes to claim money, budgets have to be set up a certain way, and with this added stimulus money, there's just more to that, and this is kind of, like I said, this is something that we can use and have somebody that will kind of give us some oversight into that and make sure that we are meeting all those requirements and doing that, doing that correctly. So I really kind of try to sit down and think if this is something that, that we can do ourselves, or if this is, you know, worth that investment. And I really do think that this is something that is going to benefit us because it's going to give some quality assurance that all those federal guidelines and requirements when it comes to that funding, we're meeting all those areas the way that we should be.
Any other questions over Barlow? No questions? Out of motion? Desiree made a motion. Waiting on a second. Amber, second. Judy?
Littleville?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Willard?
Yes.
13, new business?
There's no new business.
18, question? Cameras, no question, Desiree, second. Judy?
Littleville?
Yes.
Willard?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Number 16.